Who said the pledge last time? We'll let Polly say the pledge this time. Thanks, Chief. How we got? If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll ask Ms. Early to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call a roll?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Early?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sains?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Hey, we have a full house. Thank you all. We've got people back from knee surgery and from overseas. Good for you. Thank you. Each of you in your packet should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting of October the 23rd. If you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any corrections or additions.
Take a motion for approval, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. If no further comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, in your packet, you each should have received a copy of the check register. If you could indicate if you received that. Thank you. Now typically, at this part of our meeting is when we have public comments. But we have some very special guests with us tonight that we've put on the agenda even ahead of public comments. And delighted to have representatives from the Kentucky League of Cities here tonight. Don Harlow and Terry Johnson with Kentucky League of Cities. And it's a very important reason that they're visiting tonight. Our very own city attorney has been selected the KLC Employee of the Year.
Wow.
Wow. Congratulations.
So Andrew was honored at the KLC convention where they showed a video of him hard at work.
Where'd you get that, there?
See that video again tonight, apparently.
So tonight, they're with us to, in front of the home crowd and in front of his city council, to formally present Andrew with this award. So could not be more proud to introduce Don Harlow and Terry Johnson. If y'all could come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Andrew. Did you want to show the video, or do you want me to?
Absolutely.
He's got her down.
Maybe, maybe technology will work today.
Of course it would log out.
My unofficial IT director at work.
This is why he's so good, okay? Well, he hasn't got it up yet now. But he will, won't he?
Nothing like putting you on the spot, Andrew.
Nothing like it.
Mike's still young.
Look, in small cities, we do whatever it takes at the moment.
Everybody brace yourselves for the excitement.
Yeah, we're not sure who this David Eaton was. Just bear with us.
As long as Andrew comes up, we can get... These are pre-gives here.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a pre-give.
Yay.
There you go.
Congratulations, Andrew. You're really awesome. Thank you, my friend. And oh, how can I top that? I'm Don Harlow. As Mayor said, I'm the CFO for the Kentucky League of Cities. And it's my privilege to be here tonight to honor one of your finest. The Kentucky League of Cities has given this award for City Official, City Employee of the Year, City Official of the Year for many years. And we recognize those who exhibit outstanding service, achievements, as well as performance. There are many nominees. An independent panel of judges reviewed all this, esteemed accomplishments, and selected Andrew as your 2017 City Employee of the Year. We also want to thank our sponsors. As you saw on the video, we have Alferm, Maznick, Raznick, and Ryder. And without them, this award would not be possible. No, Andrew's charity is receiving a donation in his honor. The Carringer Heart.
Carrington's Heart?
Yeah, Carrington's Heart. And to honor those families and help to support those who are struggling with congenital heart defects. And I understand that there are about three or more city employees who have families who have been affected by that charity. And so we are proud to make that donation in your honor.
Thank you.
You all saw Andrew's accomplishments. And as CFO, one that's near and dear to my heart is always trying to save the city money and save three quarters of a million dollars by setting up the one-stop shop for permits and other business. So I applaud you. On behalf of the Kentucky League of Cities, it's my honor to recognize Andrew Hartley as your City Employee of the Year.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Mayor, do you want to come up? Do you want family to come up?
Family ought to come.
Definitely bring the picture.
The official president.
And we can get one of the two of you and then Mayor and you and the family. We'll get multiple.
All right. I love what her dress is.
That's okay. That looks perfect. Okay, I'm gonna count to three. One, two, three.
Great.
She's a doggy.
My daughter, Bryn.
All right, let's get everybody together. We'll just stand right over here, y'all.
Great. That looks great.
Y'all need to snuggle in there like you love each other.
Okay. Look at me first. We'll do one, two, three, if you don't mind. One, two, three. One, two, three. Because I cut the mayor's head off.
Again? That's why the head was cut off.
That's cute.
It's perfect.
You can help Daddy find a special spot for that.
Excuse me. Heather, Heather, Heather. I can see you up there. You look great. I love your hair. I love the color. Oh, my God. This is Nellie. I know, because I was in... I'm so glad you all came. I know. It was funny when they were doing the thing at the kids.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I can imagine. She's pretty bright.
Still his time. Still his time. You know, we see this out... That's what's so good about it.
Well, congratulations.
Continue.
Continue.
Thank you.
I thought we would have had a treat or something for that.
Yeah. I think he's taking us out.
Sorry.
Now we'll pick our agenda order back up, and we have public comments. First on the list was Ms. Laurie Saunders with Home for the Holidays.
Greg, gotta quit texting that picture, Andrew. Congratulations. So of course, you know, it's almost time again. Hard to believe, isn't it, for Home for the Holidays? It seems like we just had one of those. But anyway, everything is pretty much the same as we've done in the past. On December the 2nd, we will have the Home for the Holidays Parade that will start at 6:00 on Military, go down Main Street, take the left on Broadway, and then back up on College. We expect it to probably take... Last year, it took about an hour and a half because our parades keep throwing, which is good news. So probably think that's what it'll take again this year, maybe a little bit longer. Of course, we'll still be doing the activities on Court Square. So we'll have the petting zoo, the bounce house, the make the ornaments that day that the kids get to take at home. We'll be doing the carriage rides again using the same route where we closed South Mulberry so that it only... You couldn't go down South Mulberry because we need that to take our carriage down. And we just felt like, over the years, it's been safer just to have that one section closed. They can still go down North Mulberry. We'll still have all of the activities at the museum. So we'll have the Letters to Santa. And I don't know if you all know this or not, but we had 400 children go through the museum last year for Letters to Santa and Santa pictures. And we made over 300 ornaments for the kids to take home that day, too. So a lot of activity, a lot of little feet on the street on that day. We'll also have storytelling at the museum again this year. I think I mentioned the South Mulberry for the carriages. So I'm essentially just asking for approval to shut down the square at 11:00 a.m. and leave it closed up until after the lighting of the tree. Because even though our activities will end about 5:00 that day, we'll still have some other vendors coming in. And we'll have to leave it, rather than open it up and then close it again after the parade for the tree lighting, it just makes sense to leave it closed for the one hour. And then we will close the streets for the parade about 5:30, like we always do. And then the parade will start right at 6:00 p.m. And we have got the poster.
It's pretty.
The application for the parade in case any of you want to join us, which we hope you will. And then, of course, I did receive my District 7 permit today, so I included that in the packet along with a copy of our insurance, too, for you all to review.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. What, since Santa Claus himself? Any questions for Laurie?
The council, I think the council's gonna be in the parade, so...
Do we need to fill one of these out for our wagon?
Would you please? I'd appreciate it. You just need to let me know if you're riding the wagon. If you would.
All in favor say aye. And while Laurie's at the podium, just want you all to know that she just got back from a national bi...
Bicycle and tourism conference.
Big bicycle tourism conference where Laurie was invited to present about our success with the Horsy 100 in central Kentucky and the way we've worked collaboratively with law enforcement. And so anything to report from your trip?
You know, based on... Not as the chief bossy, I don't think he's in here. I thought I saw him a minute ago. But one of the things that I touched on was about the collaboration. That was the biggest part of my presentation, was the collaboration between the city and the Horsy 100 and how we all worked together. But the backup program was the hit. They were amazed that we were able to work as one unit instead of individual communities, that we were able to pull our resources together. Excuse me. We had several who reached out and wanted copies of that ordinance. So Andrew, if you don't mind, email that to me because I'm gonna be sharing it around the country. But they were very impressed with how that worked and how that could benefit their communities because many of their cyclists are riding from community to community. So it was a treat to be down there. It was amazing to find out that we probably have one of the largest bicycling events in the United States that's only on a weekend. You know, some of them have about 1,000 that will ride for six to eight days. But on a three-day event where they actually are only riding on Saturday and Sunday, to have 2,500 to 3,000 participants? Huge. Most places get between 200 and 300. And I did have some people reach out. There were some other bicyclist organizations that were in, from Kentucky, that were down there who have expressed an interest in bringing their rides to Georgetown. So I said, "We're all in. We would love to be known as the bicycle capital or the bicycle town for, you know, great rides like that." Because we do have the beautiful scenery. But most importantly, we're welcoming to the cyclists. And we also provide a very safe ride for our cyclists, too. So it was a good conference. Thank you for asking about it.
Thank you for going on our behalf.
So we approved?
We're approved.
Okay. I'll see you all for Light Up the Holidays.
Thank you, Laurie.
Next on the sign-in sheet is Carrie Holt, Schoolhouse Champion.
Ms. Mayor, House members, thank you for having me this evening. Hope you guys are doing okay. I'm representing the Planning Committee for Schoolhouse Champions. And this is our fifth year, and we're growing. Last year, we had 522 and five schools. So we're gonna top that. We've added three more schools in this year. So if you're doing your math, we still have three more to get. So we're gonna try to get... We've got Ann Mason, Lemons Mill, Northern, Stampin' Ground, Royal Spring. Our new participants are Eastern, Western, and GMS. So that leaves Garth Southern and Scott County Middle. We've got all Planning Period to get them involved if they want to get on board. But what we're asking for today is for Saturday, April 28th, to be able to host our course over at Georgetown College, like we've been doing for the past five years. And so what I wanted to ask for you today is, one, thank you for your support. You guys had a great collaboration, like Laurie was talking about. A great collaboration with us last year with providing police support and the... Afterwards, helping clean up and helping get everything back and restored. So we just wanted to ask for approval to come back and again, have this great event for the kids on April 28th, which is a Saturday.
And you've got all the documentation?
Yes, that should be in your packet.
Okay.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
Second. Any questions?
Good to see you guys there.
All in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Thank you. Very much. Next on the list for public comments, Mr. Bass Tilford.
Good afternoon, House Speaker. Mayor. I'd just like to piggyback the League of Cities. My wife, some of you, was off a long time. Remember those trips she made and brought things back? I think one of the things she brought back was mountain patrol. Also, we have been to motorcycles, a lot of other stuff. So just, League of Cities has been good to yours, pal. But I'm here to talk about the grant. And it says here, Mr. Attorney, that you are approving the contract. Have the council seen the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, they've seen it.
It's in the packet.
So for comment, public comment, we had a public meeting. I was part of the committee members to meet with the council members. I was under the understanding before you vote to go with this project, it has to come back to a public meeting. So that hasn't happened. The press note, that hasn't happened. So my concern is, answers, questions that we asked, what happened to houses who had displaced people? How long would it take? What would it cost? And all those answers, we talked about it. We got no answers. But this lady would have to answer those questions. So she needs to meet with us before the council votes to hire her. It's gonna make a lot of money. So the other thing I'm concerned about, since it's federal grant, federal money, it's different now. We have black contractors, we have black builders. Some way to include either those people to get next, some of that money. That's my comment. And I'm making an open, public comment about that. And until those questions are answered, I was under the understanding that it's up to you all, the committee, not just us. It's up to the neighborhood as we accept this grant. So I'm telling you, the council members, for what I'm concerned, it hadn't gone back to the committee for a public meeting.
Just first off, there has been no grant application. There has... The grant has not been applied for you. Where we are is at a point of hiring the consultant that will give us the technical information on the background of the program that we need. I think the only commitment was to have the committee that was appointed to be a liaison. Look at that. Yes, sir. And they had that meeting.
The committee's had the meeting with the city of...
The committee...
But the city has not come back to the neighborhood with a public meeting to see if it's acceptable, if they want it. I think it's not the case.
May I speak, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I am on that committee. I was at the original meeting with the community when Ms. Lowry was there. And I was also there the second time when Ms. Lowry came. And the confusion was, it just got so technical that the community really didn't understand the process. So while we were at the second community meeting, the community... They voted in three community members to be on the committee along with myself, Andrew, and Devon. So we had Rodney Vinegar, Tanya... What's her last name? Sonia?
Tanya.
Tanya. And Mr. Tilford was on that committee. They were voted in. So we had our first meeting. We were all there. We had different things that we had to do. The second meeting, I wasn't there because I had surgery. But Mr. Vinegar was there, Tanya was there, and I don't think Mr. Tilford was there. Were you, the second meeting with the steering committee?
Yeah, I was there.
Second meeting. It was the third meeting that I showed up, and that was when we got the email from Mr. Vinegar, who has resigned because he is now relocating. So in essence, in all of that going on, at that meeting that I was at and Tanya was at, we had decided to move forward with Ms. Lowry because she had the best credentials to go forward with the grant. And we even got information from someone saying that she was the best one. But it was never said that we had to go back to the community to talk about it with Ms. Lowry because that was why the committee was put together in the first place. So in saying that, that's why you have the information of Ms. Lowry and going forward with her because she is very qualified to move forward with the grant. I mean, we got like a resume on her. Besides her credentials, you all have gotten all of that. And it's not easy to write a grant. We don't know if we're gonna get this grant. She is just one that knows the ins and outs, that if it's at all possible that we can get that for the greater Boston community, that is our desire to do so. And in the process of all of this, we're gonna have to also see about replacing Mr. Vinegar so that we can move forward. But we do have a committee. It was put together by the Boston community. And we are at the point now where we need to move forward and have Ms. Lowry move forward with the technical part of it and doing all of her groundwork so that we can apply for this grant by August of 2018. That's why we didn't do it for August of 2017 because we did not have enough time to lay ground and make it happen. So that's where we're at.
I represent a neighborhood association, Black Neighborhood Association Committee for the city. It's my obligation to report back to them what has gone on at the committee to see if the neighborhood even wants it.
Do they?
I don't know. Until I meet with them, I got a meeting set up for me to meet with them.
Was the committee, was the rest of us supposed to meet with them, too? I haven't got a date on that.
This is just a community meeting. Neighborhood Association, Boston Neighborhood Association.
That's different from our meeting that we had as a group of people from the community and the people that are being appointed?
Yes. They live there. They own property there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tilford. I am absolutely confused by what you're saying.
Well, they know what I represent, okay? I represent the neighborhood. And the neighborhood had decided if they want this grant.
There is no grant yet, Bass. We're trying to get enough technical information to be able to share it with the community to see if a block grant is a tool that the community would like to use.
We stand the same fact.
Yes, sir. And we, and we... The citizens at the meeting for the block grant program elected three representatives to do their work for them. Of that committee, one of those three community representatives voted in favor of Ms. Lowry. One of those members was not present but had indicated... Let me get there. One of those members had indicated his support for Ms. Lowry but could not attend the meeting. And the third member is you, and you did not attend the meeting.
Well, I've read...
So Ms. Lowry's... What we're trying to do is put together a technical expert that will help us make sure that we do this legally. The communication with the neighborhood will be done through me and the council and the members of this committee. But if you're talking about a separate group, a resident group, I don't know where they fit into this structure.
They're the ones that own the property and live in the neighborhood.
That's exactly right.
They own the property and live in the neighborhood. The head has been spelt out. If a person's going to be displaced, what it costs them to move back into the house, if you're gonna build a new house, how long it's gonna take to have to pay part of it, none of those questions have been asked.
Mr. Tilford, we don't know the answers to those.
We don't have an... That information does not exist here.
Well, why can't you get those answers before you hire?
She's gonna give us those answers, Bass. That's why she's...
She needs to give it to the council.
And then...
It's not reasonable to ask her to do that for free, Mr. Tilford. It's not reasonable to ask her to do that for free, Mr. Tilford.
Yeah.
Is the issue.
Yeah.
She's already, she's already essentially donated five or six hours of her time to trying to set it up, but she is expected at some point to either be told, yes, we're going to hire you, or no, we're not. But she can't come and volunteer her time to give us the technical details of how to apply for a CDBG grant and, and expect to not be paid for that. That's her business. That's what she does for a living.
I know.
She's a consultant, and, and she's very good at what she does.
Uh, since, I've seen some of her work. Looked at some of the houses compared to maybe election and other places, under a moderate income, and there's no comparison of the quality that the one I saw and the one that she's built. Let's make that statement.
Oh, I, I must say that Chris Lowry herself does not build homes. She is a CDBG.
She hires contractors.
No, she does not.
No, she doesn't do any of that.
She is a CDBG grant writer. She acts as the direction.
It's the money.
Cities and counties that hire her.
That's it.
That's it.
Serious.
So all she's trying to do, Mr. Tilford, is see if we can get that grant so they'll know, the committee and so forth, know what to do. That nothing else is happening, just seeing if we can get the grant.
Well, I won't talk about the presentation. I'd leave that alone, but you council members know what I'm talking about. You have a good day.
Thank you. Let's see, public comments. Oh, that means it's Mayor's comments.
Mm-huh.
Uh, not, not a lot of comments, but several things that, that, uh, that we've had to talk about here recently. Today was, of course, the vendor day for the public safety folks to go visit, uh, was it four or five, four or five vendors? Four? Four of the potential radio vendors, uh, had set up shop out at the county road grides today, uh, with an opportunity for, for our first responders and policymakers to go out and look at the equipment. It was, it was a good day to get to talk with those, uh, potential vendors, cause after today, we, we cannot have any further communication with them. Uh, that was the point of today's event, that we could talk freely today. We can no longer talk freely with the vendors. They'll, they'll, our RFP process will go forward now, so, uh, our relationship will be very formal with the vendors after today. Secondly, a couple of you got calls or saw on Facebook, uh, some concern about the color walk that happened Saturday morning. And fortunately, I've learned a lot more about the event and what's happened since then. Uh, apparently, this, this joint venture between, uh, Bush Hound College and the hospital, uh, these, these events are done in many cities, and their practice is to celebrate by throwing brightly colored chalk dust up in the air. Well, in at least one area of town, the crowd got very exuberant and threw a lot of the chalk dust up in the air, and that was on South Hamilton. Uh, apparently, there were a number of locations around the city where the chalk was thrown up. Uh, I've been told that in every one of those other locations, there was an adult supervisor, and this was the one location where there was not an adult supervisor.
Waiting on.
Uh, so they'll work on that for next year. But I'm, I'm delighted to tell you that after, uh, I got, I got, I got a text from Karen, and she had gotten a complaint. And I got a Facebook message from someone that lives on South Hamilton, and, uh, those were the only two that I got. But what I can tell you is, is they went into action that morning.
They did.
Uh, they went back and washed off the streets, they washed off cars, they knocked on all the doors and gave people car wash vouchers, they offered to pressure wash houses. They had bent over backwards, uh, trying to make this right. Uh, today, Bridget, pardon, no, Bridget at the hospital.
Oh, Foster.
Bridget Foster, thank you. Uh, Bridget Foster, uh, stopped me today and gave me a full explanation. Uh, Robert, the, the car that you sent me a picture of, it was a formerly white car that was blue after the color of him. Bridget sent me a picture of that car, and it's white again. So, uh, even this afternoon late, the hospital CEO called me and wanted to make sure that this was okay. Uh, they assured us that because the hospital was involved, this was non-toxic chalk.
I think most of that was made out of cornstarch, is what I've understood.
Cornstarch.
We couldn't email the day on that, too.
They would like to do this again next year. So they're, they're being very careful about this response. So if you got complaints, I'm, I'm glad to report to you that the organizers did the right thing.
Well, I got the phone call back after they had taken care of it, and that they were satisfied with, with, the person that complained was satisfied that they took care of it, so it was all good.
It was good.
Well, I saw the, uh, video on, uh, the news graphics site, and it was quite visual.
I seen that on Duck Dynasty where they're running, they throw chalk on you, all different colors coming through. This time, it must have been a little.
Well, it was on houses. There was a lot of chalk dust on South Hamilton.
That's funny.
Uh, want to remind everybody that we've got our joint workshop, not a meeting, but workshop, uh, tomorrow afternoon at six o'clock with fiscal court. Uh, we issued a three-point agenda for the three projects that we'd like to talk about potentially getting funded. And, uh, those are, of course, the radio system that we'll, we'll have the presentation on tomorrow night. Uh, also, we thought it, uh, a good, it was a first chance for the court and the council to sit together and talk about our business park transaction. So we're, we're getting slides made of, of what some of the early engineering drawings look like at the business park. And then finally, uh, I'd like to discuss with the council and court, the road improvements that are needed for Old Oxford Pike and potentially an extension to Lexus Way.
Now, this, at the courthouse, right?
Yes.
At the courthouse, okay.
So we'll do that at six o'clock tomorrow night. Uh, you all should have gotten an email with an article attached. Uh, one of the engineering journals, uh, did a very nice, uh, article with Kyle, a good one. Uh, a long interview about city projects and how we're handling things and how we're handling the growth, and it was a pretty impressive article. So if you, if you get a chance, uh, give Kyle an attaboy. Uh, also, would like to mention that Scott Hall, who is director of our revenue commission, uh, has been working on a couple of, uh, new relationships that we think will let the revenue commission do a better job of tracking all of our taxpayers. Uh, for example, he's pursuing a relationship with Kentucky Revenue Cabinet where we can be able to cross-reference our names with the revenue cabinet's names, uh, which is just another tool that we wouldn't have thought of without Scott's help. Uh, Scott also has been serving on a, uh, an IRS advisory board.
Taxpayer advisory board.
A taxpayer advisory board, uh, to give the perspective of taxpayers from, from a revenue com- uh, commission employee. And, uh, he was just named chair or vice chair of that group?
I think of like the Kentucky region.
Of the Kentucky region.
I need to pull up the details, but keep talking.
If you pull up the details, uh, it just, for years, our revenue commission operated in kind of, uh, quiet. And not well understood.
Behind the scenes.
And today, I just want to continue to give assurances that Scott has done an outstanding job, is, uh, running our revenue commission and is, uh, getting the recognition statewide of, of doing that. Uh, and also, uh, I've had a chance to talk with the finance committee and a couple of others, but we do have, uh, an RFQ on the street seeking architectural services, uh, for the potential renovation of City Hall. I believe the 22nd.
I think that's the deadline, and then I think we meet the next week to score, so hopefully we have something to report by that first thing.
So we're actually involved in that process now. Uh, and that's all the Mayor's comments that I had right now.
Was it repairs or renovations?
Renovations. To City Hall?
Mm-huh.
Oh, I, I think, knowing what we have to do here, Karen, we think this is a complete move out.
And?
Renovation, and probably out for a year or longer.
And we'll pay the money for that, along with all the other projects you're talking about fiscal court with tomorrow night?
Fiscal court's not gonna donate a dime to this. But if we don't do something significant to City Hall, we're not gonna have a City Hall.
Well, that's what I was thinking, maybe we should have been stepping repairs first and, and then talk about renovations for the wall.
We can go about it any way you want. Th- this building is in a.
It's in a repair.
Is in a place where a Band-Aid and a repair is not gonna stop it. If, if on your way out of the meeting tonight, look at the cornerstone on the front corner of the building, and it's getting ready to fall out into Court Street.
Yeah, I understand.
The mayor's office leaks. This room leaks. Repairs aren't gonna fix this building. So we'll, we'll get a price tag, and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Uh, I was about to ask about the Ford trucks for the park. Uh, let's see, also under Mayor's comments, uh, we have an executive order, uh, in your packet. Uh, we have two reappointments to make to the tourism commission. Folks who have served one three-year term, but they're eligible for a second three-year term. And those reappointments are Nicole Rivera and Roy Cornet. So, uh, I would, I'll just take these separately. I'll, I'll, the executive orders.
Are these both three years?
No, all three.
Oh, we can do them all three.
Yeah, your date's wrong.
Yeah, it's gonna say, yeah.
Twenty twenty, December thirty-one, twenty twenty. And the new appointment is Daniel Harrison, who has agreed to serve on our tourism commission.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Second. And if there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, I have an input on that. I couldn't vote either way, and I, I need to ask Andrew if I should recuse or abstain, because Daniel Harrison is related to me by marriage.
I mean, you could, you could recuse yourself if you feel like that's a conflict of interest. That's what I would recommend you do.
I recuse myself from that vote based on Daniel being related to marriage, by marriage.
So noted. Uh, under the city attorney portion of our agenda, we do have the municipal order approving a, a contract with Chris Lowry. There's a couple of, uh, pretty important documents, uh, in that portion of your packet. Uh, there is a, uh, a timeline of the actions that have been taken. Uh, there was some, uh, due diligence that I think Kitty Dugood may have done about checking Ms. Lowry's professional credentials, uh, and then her resume is in there as well. So, uh, it is our recommendation that, that we approve this contract with Chris, Chris Lowry.
Do you need a motion, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion, please.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And if, if there are no questions, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, based on, uh, lack of clear understanding for some members of the community over there that will eventually be affected by it if we get the grant, and the fact that you lost a third member, um, the third member of the original committee that was appointed by the community.
Thank you. Motion carries.
It's important to point out, Scott was elected the national vice chair for the IRS taxpayer advocacy panel.
National, 2018 National Vice Chair for IRS Taxpayer Advocacy Panel. Pretty nice panel. Thank you. Uh, next item under city attorney is a municipal order approving the purchase of property in the business park. Uh, last meeting, uh, after our executive session, council authorized, uh, us to make a counter offer, uh, on the property that, the five acres we had discussed in the business park. Uh, that offer was not accepted. And the counter offer, uh, the original offer, uh, that was brought to the council at the last meeting, uh, the owner will still, uh, approve the purchase at that price, and that was the $225,000 amount that we, uh, brought to you at the last meeting. So we are now at a point of, I think it's, it's, uh, pretty straightforward. We either, uh, accept, uh, the transaction at $225,000 or, uh...
And the appraised price was 175,000?
Appraised price is still 175,000.
So Mayor, as we go forward, what is, if we don't, if we no longer use the appraised, um, value for property, then what becomes the guideline of, where's, other than the vote up or down for the council, where is our guidelines on how we proceed forward?
I think in large measure, it will continue to be, uh, appraised value in most circumstances. I think that we will occasionally find, uh, a piece of property that is essential to a project that we have going on where, uh, where we may have to pay more than appraised value. We have determined our legal ability to do that, and want to continue to remind the council that in this particular case, we are spending money that came to us from the Toyota incentive package, and that money is restricted to buying, to use it for buying property in the business park. This is specifically what we were provided the million dollars to do. And it is a key piece of property, uh, in our expansion. So my recommendation is still that we purchase the property at $225,000 an acre.
An acre?
Uh, excuse me. Or the parcel.
I got scared there, Mayor.
Land and resell it. That's hard, good.
That would be a five-acre parcel. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll have another question, and this is probably hypothetical, cause we're not at that point, but the next time we go to buy the next piece of property over there to help finish out the puzzle, and they now know that we don't have to stay with an appraised value, and this might be fairly reasonable, because it's only $50,000 more than what we appraised it for, but if they want 250,000 or a half million more than what it's appraised for, uh, how do we come if we can't negotiate, uh, something that's reasonable for the city, even if it is spending Toyota's donation, then what do we do? Do we condemn their property and take it?
You know, and we've had real detailed conversations about that, Karen, on, on where and how we can use condemnation.
Right.
Uh, we do know that, that we cannot use condemnation for economic development purposes. That's clearly understood, that, that is not within our ability to do. Uh, however, we can use condemnation to, uh, if we are clear about issues. For example, if we needed a piece of property to put a fire station on.
It's different.
We could certainly condemn it. That is non-economic development. If we needed a piece of property for a, uh, a stormwater feature, and we can demonstrate that, we think we can condemn that. Well, if we ever put ourselves in a position of where we can be questioned, is it for a fire station, or is it economic development? I don't want us to ever get in that situation, because we will lose.
Public access road?
We can condemn.
Lexus Way type situation.
I think one way of looking at your question, Karen, is to say that, that the legislature has said, when it comes to cities purchasing property for economic development, they stand in the shoes of any other buyer, and the negotiating power is equal to that of a, a citizen or a developer. So we don't get, the legislature has basically said, we don't get to use the hammer of, either you take, um, fair market value, or we're gonna take it away from you. So we naturally lose that, um, we lose that leverage. That's fair to say, but it's not fair to say that we somehow get taken advantage of because the market will determine what the price is. That's, that's the only answer I have to.
Yeah, I'm just a little worried for the future, what it brings for the rest of the property over there, if we're willing to go $50,000 more. We don't have, when, we used to use it as appraised value. Instead, whether that was right or wrong, that we could say that's, that's our threshold that we were, it kept the playing field even when we negotiated with everybody on what the city was looking for or needed. Now, there is no equal boundary on how we negotiate with it, so I just don't see why the next piece. piece of property won't come back and be half a million dollars, and maybe it's worth a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and it's half a million dollars. So...
And that's where I think council will use their discretion. Is this reasonable? I think it is. The example you cited, I don't think would be reasonable. I do think there's a...
But then if that becomes a piece of property that's desperately needed to finish it off, then we turn around and we condemn it and end up making sure the water runs through that way, so it's, it's a legal condemnation. And that does bother, to be honest with you, I, when Toyota did come to town, our family got property that was condemned. And so it does bother, because I don't know what they went through, so it does bother me that that's now what we're setting up, because we didn't, we no longer have that threshold or that, that magical place we could be, that that's what's setting up for people in the future, is that maybe condemnation. So anyway, I voted no for the last, last time around for the two hundred thousand, so I'm going to vote no for this, because there's no guideline anymore.
And we can... It certainly, that, that...
We'll jump those bridges when we get there.
And, and we'll, we'll, we'll get there. Our, our choice is to, we have a choice. We can not buy the property and not expand the business park, but I don't think that's in the best interest of Georgetown's future. But we have that choice. So...
How much additional property is allocated, or with the money that Toyota has provided? Do we know where that's going to be invested?
We're, we're negotiating with some folks, and we, we know that one situation that's in a, not a bankruptcy, but a...
Foreclosure.
A foreclosure action. So we're, we're just still working on some. This is the, we do know we're pretty close to getting those three deeds from Toyota, uh, but this is the next piece that's available to us in the business.
So we have three pieces coming from Toyota. This piece that we're looking at, one piece in foreclosure, so is there just one more piece in there?
Five total that we would like.
Is three of those one that Toyota's giving us?
Eight total, if you look at it.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
We are, we are still negotiating on the other four properties. And those are in various states of negotiation. I think the one, the one that we're probably closest on is the one that's in foreclosure.
That would make sense.
Are we dealing with a lender on that one, or individuals?
The realtor, so far.
And the realtor represents who, though? The owner or the lender?
It's like a private foreclosure, so it's...
Complicated.
They represent the, the estate.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an estate. That's another complication. Um, and, and understand that the rest of the properties are buried in their importance to the project.
Right.
And this property here, is it one that could be considered a location for a fire department or a storm drainage in the future, or is this something that can't be used for that?
It, Jack's not in his head it could. We're just, what, what we're trying to do is, is, uh, accumulate enough of the parcels to where I can, our expansion can be as complete as it can be. And we can always cut off this part or that part, but it's clear that we'll do the best job with the business park if we can acquire the vacant, or the, the outstanding lots that we need to acquire, and then apply the broadest engineering approach to it. It's cheaper that way than piecemeal and stuff, and, uh, so it, it, Jack's telling me it could be, but that wasn't our original intention.
Then you got to weigh whether the extra twenty-five thousand is worth doing condemnation or not.
Yeah, I'd...
Which is a longer process, right?
Yeah.
Costlier?
Yeah.
Well, it, it's significantly, uh, longer and costlier.
And our plans are to work on the business park like now. Like now, right?
We're, we're getting closer on the engineering. We hope to get much closer on, on the certainty of the county sharing the project with us, and, uh... This is the way the process goes. We, we, we know what parcels we don't have. We know what parcels we're trying to buy, and this is the next one, and it takes two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to buy, if we can buy it or not buy it. It's just that simple.
Yep.
Yes, or no?
They know if you were done.
Don't do it.
I completely respect what Karen is saying. I do. As I stated at our last meeting, I mean, it's just having the vision to look ahead and how important the business park is and will be. Uh, I'll make the motion.
That's at the two twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
A second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to, to, uh, purchase the property at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Still answer any questions or opportunities for comment?
Well, the vote's a little easier for me to make, knowing that Toyota donated a million dollars for us to buy this property, some of the property out there. That's, it's not the, uh, citizens taxpayers' money we're spending. It's the money Toyota gave us. That makes it a little easier.
It is. And the other thing I want to point out, too, is that the business park has made it very accommodating for people to go out there and buy property undervalued
Yeah.
to build. So, you know, it, it'll kind of like, it's something that's needed. Right now, this is the, the bridge that we cross.
Yeah.
Which, of course, is another problem for me, that it's, we're right now currently selling it for twenty-five thousand dollars an acre, but you're not buying it, purchasing it for a million five thousand dollars an acre.
And I just, I just have to say, for, for the record, that, I've said this before, but every acre that has ever been sold in the business park has been subsidized.
Absolutely.
Every acre. Every acre that has ever sold in the business park will be subsidized.
Yeah.
And that's in favor of a broader policy of job creation and economic development.
Yep.
Of course, yes, we are going to sell it for less than we're buying it for.
But our intention is that when we do sell it for that, more businesses comes in, it's more revenue for the city.
Right.
There's more things we can do. Maybe we get to build a fire station out there or something like that.
That is needed.
Property taxes make up about six percent of our revenue. Occupational taxes make up over ninety percent of our revenue.
Yep.
If we're going to pay for services, it takes jobs.
Yeah.
Period. Or we can't operate a city. So...
Is a million dollars going to be enough to cover buying all of the property we need to buy?
It's a good question. I'm not sure, Chuck. I'm not sure. Uh, it... I don't know. But, but we, we know that... I have an expectation that, that the business park is, is an investment between city and county government, uh, around seven million dollars. I think there's about seven million dollars worth of infrastructure needs, give or take. Uh, so... We're, this is a large, very large-scale project, and we're going down the road as, as carefully as we can. Now, I can't answer your question. There are no further questions? You all ready? You have, you have just made a comment, Dave?
No, I, I'm going to make a comment after we vote on it. I might have to recuse myself from this vote tonight.
Okay. Um, and if we could call a roll?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Ms. Twinkle Sains?
No.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
I'm going to recuse, please.
Mr. Singer Earley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mayor, if, if you recall, maybe you don't, but I did ask the question if, if, in regards to Joe Ellis, if it was the family that had the greenhouse, and...
Yes.
And I, I did have, uh, and the answer that I got was it wasn't the same family, but it, as it turns out, I later found out that it was. So I feel like I, I did need to recuse myself from, from this vote. But I do support the council in the direction that you went tonight. We've made a long-term investment here. Toyota's our partner in it. Hopefully the county's going to be our partner in it. If it wasn't for the business park and the work by Jack Connor and the board and many, many other people, Lexus wouldn't be coming to Georgetown right now. BCTC wouldn't be in Georgetown. So I know we're paying a little bit more than we'd like to for this specific, but this is a very critical piece of property. It's at the very front of the business park. And I think Jack would tell you, and others would tell you, that, that this is a very key piece. So I do support the, the, the direction the council went tonight and, and those efforts. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, item nine on your agenda. Um, I promise we're going to get to you, CJ. I've made you sit here all night.
It's okay.
Uh, item nine, uh, is, uh, a municipal order recommending that we accept streets in Pleasant Valley subdivision. They've been through the entire process, and we're trying to get better about cleaning up the process and accepting the streets when we should.
You just need a motion on that? Just a motion, Mayor.
Second. Oh, Chuck and Havens. I'm sorry.
It was probably a tie, but you go on, buddy.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I need it. It's throwing him. I did it.
Let's see. Item ten, Chief Ford, a municipal order accepting a fire commission grant? We always like to accept fireworks.
Especially when it's a hundred percent.
Free money.
Yeah, free money.
Mayor, council, uh, we were notified, I guess it was last week, we, uh, were approved for a fire commission grant through the fire commission that was for five thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars, and it would be used for a overhaul training program. And it's a hundred percent paid for grant.
Best grant you can get, John.
I love it.
Oh, yeah, we want to vote on that. There's a motion and a second.
Hey, we just lower our cost basis.
Thanks, John.
Very much. Uh, we have with us tonight, from Assured Partners, formerly known as Niece Lukens. Yeah, come on, I don't know, Jeb. Uh, we, we've done really great work with Niece Lukens, Assured Partners, for the last several years, with their self-insurance program. And one of the steps we took, uh, over, a year, just over a year ago, was we, we changed our, uh, stop-loss insurance. Uh, it was a move that was transparent to our employees, but it saved us some money on, on the administrative end. And now we're at the point, Jed, where I guess we need to, uh, renew that stop-loss policy?
Renew. Yeah.
I, I felt like this would be a fairly piece, uh, routine piece of business for the council, but just in case there were questions, given the complexity of the topic, uh, we had, we asked Jed to come over and be with us. So...
Yeah. Well, first of all, thanks for having me. Um, it's been an interesting year. I was here just, what, back in June, I guess, getting approval to move to United Healthcare. So thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Megan and her team for, and the employees for, you know, getting through that transition. It's never easy. Um, so as we start the renewal process, we start looking for any way to save money. At the end of the day, when you're self-funded, you can't really predict claims that come in the door. You can only truly budget based on expected costs and total maximum liability. As we look back at the last three years, as far as your largest claims, um, your specific stop-loss is currently at seventy-five thousand dollars. In two thousand and five, you had zero people hit the seventy-five thousand dollar mark. In two thousand and sixteen, you had three. But if you had actually increased your stop-loss from seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand in two thousand and sixteen, you still would have saved roughly nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. In two thousand and seventeen, if you would have increased your stop-loss from seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand, you only had one claim, and those potential savings would have been thirty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars. So based on our look-back period, we have looked and ra- made the recommendation to move from a seventy-five thousand stop-loss to an eighty-five thousand dollars, which would make your fixed cost, um, decrease as far as fixed cost savings of thirty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. So looking at the history, we look, we seem to think that it would be the best interest to save truly fixed cost dollars to move to that stop-loss limit. Does that make sense? It does. Jeb, one question, though. It does, it does reference eighty thousand, at least in the MO that I'm taking a look at. So if we go to eighty-five thousand, uh...
It's eighty-two.
Do what now?
I got eighty on this one also.
So it, it won't change, if it's eighty-five, that the cost you're quoting us is the same? Correct. Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
And Jeb, that, and his team brought this question to us, uh, but the data clearly showed that it, it's a reasonable recommendation. We're taking on slightly more risk on our account. Uh, but...
A little bit more risk.
The look-back, the look-back looks that, looks like it would have saved us money in a typical year.
Right.
So they think it's a prudent thing for us to do at this point.
Yeah. And, and we like to look back three years. Um, trying to, I think it's been three years since we actually truly went, uh, self-funded. So, um, it, it, your stop-loss carrier will continue to be the same company. Your network is still United Healthcare, so the employees will see United Healthcare. That's all they're really truly concerned about. But, um, looking back, we think it's to the best benefit of, of city of Georgetown. And, and one last thing I wanted to mention for a, a, we call, we call them groups. For a group your size, we expect four claims to hit seventy-five thousand in a policy year, and one year out of the last three, you've only had three, is your worst-case scenario. So overall, things are running very well. And, uh, again, thanks for your time today.
Did we go?
Nope, we have a motion and a second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, Jeb, just an interesting development. Uh, county government is now having serious conversations about going self-insured. Uh, they, they've been a long time coming for that discussion, but they're having it now. And, um, I'm encouraged by that. I, I just wonder if someday we're both successfully self-insured, if there might be an opportunity to work together with a lot more lives involved, and, and the opportunities that, that might present in terms of wellness benefits that we can only dream of today. But, uh, Jed's got us on the right path, so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see. Going back to our official agenda, uh...
Radio.
Chief, would you like to pass some radios? Uh, purchase order for radios for police cruisers? Is that an MO in our packet?
Yes, it is.
Good. Chief, I assume this, uh, forty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars is all budgeted?
Yes.
It's a great question. I don't have the answer to that, unfortunately. I think this may be above and beyond the original eight that we were going to budget. If Stacy Street could probably tell us. But we had originally budgeted eight for the cruisers we plan on ordering. This may be a little above that.
Because, so this is sixteen.
Yep. So that is definitely above what we had originally talked about getting before we switched to enterprise.
So when it says it was approved in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen police budget, so it's...
Half of them?
Is he asking for eight, or is he asking for sixteen? I have not seen yours, sorry.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah. So eight that were originally budgeted, so it'd be half of that cost.
And we, we, we did that. We, we allowed you to order more vehicles than you would have ordered normally because of our new enterprise fleet management program.
We got to have it.
So they all have to be upfitted, so we, we outran our budget by eight radios.
And we have looked at possibly reusing some of the ones we could pull out of the cars, but they're not upgradable to P twenty-five. So we would, we would be a little bit, we'd be wasting money to put money back in.
Well, what we'll need to do is disfor, council's assurance, uh, if, if we can find that additional, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars within the police department's budget and another line item, we will shift that around.
Can I make the motion today?
If we cannot, then we'll have to come back to you all and ask you to amend the budget.
Right.
But first, we'll take it out of your hat and another...
You got that much hat.
Well, that, I'm going to make the emo- the emotion. I'm going to make the motion that, that, that extra... It's not worth repeating, Polly?
It can be blushed.
I'm glad I didn't hear it.
It was good. I'll tell you later.
Don't worry, just rerun.
Mayor, I can give you a second on that real quick, thinking it farther.
Second, before this, uh, degrades further.
Do you know the motion I'm trying to say, right, Tracy?
I do.
I do also. That's why I seconded it, okay?
We're paying for this out of the police department budget, and there may be line item changes required, and if we...
For the budget.
We'll come back here.
Departmentally, we will come back to you.
What he said.
Yeah.
What he said.
And was that your second, Martin?
Yes, sir.
What he said.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Are you still up there?
One more.
Surplus.
One more, good. Stacy just responded.
Says items for surplus.
There's money in the budget.
There is money in the budget?
Yay!
So, I'll buy some radios.
You can buy radios.
Well, you're gonna make it off this surplus items.
That's right.
Let's see, and then you're also municipal order approving items for surplus. Anything on there in particular, Chief?
Some of the RMO equipment that has come off the one-year period, we have to keep it. Things of that nature, nothing, nothing really yet known.
Interesting, see a sewing machine on there.
Looks pretty benign.
Yeah.
So, are we trading in a drone?
This, I think, is a, it's a robot. It's one of those remote-controlled robots, got the video camera on it.
There you go, you can bet on one if you want.
I think I probably should shut up, but I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We're at the front of the meeting for council comments. And Mark, could we start with you?
Yeah, but I don't think this is an issue that really, that we can have a big impact on, but I didn't know if there's a way, if we can check with the state. There's two intersections that I've just, that I travel regularly. If you're on the bypass, you're on the bypass coming to Frankfort Pike in either direction, if you're turning left, whether you're coming into town or going away from town, right there at that intersection. There's a blind spot there at that intersection. It's, the road kinda goes up and then, to make a long story short, there's no green arrow for the turning in either direction. It's yellow, but there's an arrow there. And I've not seen the green arrow if you're turning in either direction. There's a green light, or I'm sorry, there's a, it's a flashing light. And then also, when you go down to, if you stay on the bypass and go to the next intersection, there at Payne's Depot. If you're on Payne's Depot, taking a left in either direction, going towards Kroger or taking a right, going back towards Western, there's no green arrow there. It's a flashing light, the arrow, it's a flashing yellow light. I didn't know if there's any way that we can check on whether or not there's an opportunity, if that green light actually works on the turn.
I don't think it does.
On that turn arrow.
Yeah, you know, I've noticed this all over the place. You go to Lexington and you got a light that has red, yellow, green, but the green doesn't work ever. Not just that the bulb's out, it's we just have taken it out of the cycle. It instantly goes to a yellow flash. And I don't, that's a programming thing. We can find out the way they programmed it.
There might be, I'm sorry.
What the hours are and why.
There might be more intersections that have that same situation where that occurs, but those are two that I really noticed, and those are two pretty busy intersections.
I think it is programmed because it's the same way at Lexus Way when you're going to turn up into where the engineering building is. When you get over in your left-hand lane, like you'll, 'cause I've seen this myself. I sit out there with some of the guys from there and it would be like, it would flash green, the arrow would, and then all of a sudden, I mean, it was like two seconds and then it was yellow. I mean, it's quick, so it probably is a programming thing for you to be able to do.
We can ask District Seven to tell us. That's supposed to be that way.
We talked about it in traffic today.
Okay.
Both of those. And part of the flashing yellow is to get rid of some of the stationary green arrow, which saves time, 'cause how many times you see a green arrow and nobody's there? So, if you got a flashing yellow, if it's a traveled road that doesn't have a whole lot of traffic, you have time to make your lifetime, so you don't figure they need the green.
So, they've done some traffic counts and they've...
Yeah, they've studied the intersection and I know that they are re-studying the Timberland Way intersection and they're gonna re-study the Northern 25 and Lemon.
Northern 25?
Yeah, going out there, you know, around Cardinal and Long Lake.
Long Lake.
There you go. I knew it started in L. But that intersection right there is really bad right now.
Talking about on the main one, right there where you turn left or right or go straight, yeah.
Yeah, that intersection's terrible, so they're...
I got a question on that to bring up.
Yeah, they're doing a study, they're doing a study on that. Since Lexus Way's open and the new bypass extension's open, that has just been, traffic has increased tremendously. They're slow working on these studies.
And if we have concerns about the traffic light at the intersection of Long Lake and 25 today, given the zone change that's gonna be coming to you all in the next month, those concerns will increase.
We also have an issue coming up.
No, that's all I had, I just, if we can, if there's an opportunity, opportunity to look at that again. Not just those two, but it sounds like some others as well.
Can we bring it up in the traffic committee and talk to Natalia about it?
I think it's beneficial to check into...
The other issue we have is Connector Road in Blossom Park and the Oxford, Old Oxford area. They're gonna develop that 20 acres back there where Golden Corral was. And Ben told us about that at the last traffic committee meeting. That's already one of our worst, our worst intersections in the city. So, we hit Natalia up with that, it's a state road, we've got to fix this. So, we're trying, but state moves at their own pace.
And we quickly got things going with Hamilton Hickel and we got Blossom Park straight. And hopefully you all have noticed that.
Absolutely.
And, but we've got some development issues where we're gonna, we're gonna be struggling.
What Ben told us is they can put as a condition to their approval for the development plan is that they have to provide a remedy for that intersection. So, they're gonna have, they told them to go back, they did a study at the wrong time. They're gonna make the developers go back and do a new study.
They did a study on that earlier.
And hopefully they'll come back with a suggestion and ask them to do it. Who knows, maybe they'll have to put a roundabout in or something. That, one of the suggestions right there is a roundabout.
I haven't heard enough time with those things.
They're not going away, we gotta get used to them.
They do work.
Derby State, I had a call today and they're wondering where the progress is with it as far as, you know, the people there in the right-of-way, they've moved their fences, they've moved their buildings, and they're wondering, when is it gonna get started? You know, are they gonna have to keep their fences and their sheds moved all winter long? Or are they getting ready to? And I told him I would get back with them to let them know. So, do you have an update on that?
I don't, but I can get you one.
Okay, I meant to call you today.
Rent a contract with them.
Right, okay. If you could do that and get with me, I'll let him know that I'll let him know tomorrow.
We've done the contract.
Oh, yeah.
We've got that, but I just can't imagine why they wouldn't wanna be turning the order.
They haven't seen any dirt moved. So, I'm gonna follow up on that. And I, this might be a little early, but I just wanted to kinda bring it up. Christmas Day is on the Fourth of Bunday in December.
He won't be here.
That's two, I owe you. Just wanted to, I don't know if you, do we have to make a motion or something not to have it? Is it too soon?
Okay.
We usually just have one meeting, yeah.
My point was, we usually do make that motion.
So, you won't make it now?
I'm making it, we don't have it on December 25th is what I was gonna say.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a third, fourth, and fifth.
There's a second on there.
Third, fourth, and fifth.
Not the 25th, I won't.
I'm figuring that if there's something that's going on, you know, that would need our attention, that we would call a special call meeting anyway.
If we run into anything at the end of the year, we can call a special meeting. There's a motion and a second that we not have our December 25th.
See, we won't, we won't come back to council meeting till sometime up in January, about that.
Just the only thing is on that, if that zone change is being brought to us, is that gonna interfere? We've got 90 days from the time, but that, is that right?
Yeah, we do have 90 days.
So, that's the only thing, if they're gonna bring that...
We assume that they will want to bring that next council meeting.
If they do that, then we got first and second on it.
First and second.
Before the new year.
And if there was a delay for any reason, we would have first meeting in December.
We had to have first and second. So, we'd have the next...
The next council meeting and then the next one.
If we were ready for first reading.
We've got two left this year.
That may be, we never know what the public's gonna do, but that could be a meeting that we have some audience for.
Yeah, I think so, I already got comments, I think so.
Are we talking about two different, I know Pleasant Valley is one of them, but US 25 is that the other one?
US 25 is the one we're talking about right now, David. The property immediately behind Ann Mason.
Right, yeah.
And that has gotten a favorable recommendation from planning and zoning.
Apparently both of them.
Both of them did.
Both of them did, and they will be coming to us.
Right, both.
Only one of them was, I think only one of them was really controversial, but I could be wrong about that.
Which one are you thinking?
I thought it was 25.
Just wait.
Both of them are.
Just wait. The other one's got cherry blossom on it.
I hadn't heard that one yet, but it's the 25.
Both will be, both will be opportunities for council to learn a lot before you...
Opportunity, nothing...
I like that, I like that. Anything else, honey?
No, sir.
All right, I have a few things here. I had a gentleman in the shop, O'Mill Road. He says it's really in bad shape and was wondering where it was on the list to get repaved. It's been, it's been patched and things like that, but he says it's in really bad. Okay, good, okay. And then while you're looking at that, he also had a question. O'Mill also drains into, if I'm on the right one, O'Mill or Morgan Mill, Morgan Mill. It's Morgan Mill. It drains into the back lot, actually, where DeGerris Mill into that big field that's still back there, the floodplain back there. And he doesn't know if the city, if the street, 'cause we don't really have a homeowner association, it's in somebody's private property and they're the one at this point in time cleaning it. But is it not really the city's responsibility to come back there and clean it out?
Yeah, that O.A.T.O.A. thing again, isn't it?
So, I told him, there is no way, that's...
If it's the property I'm thinking about, it is the old Duncliffe property. Does that sound right?
I don't think it's that far back.
They moved a house back there and they've had drainage issues and travel issues.
Yeah, but I don't think it's that far back. I think it's, 'cause that's Fern, that's Fern Hill.
Fern Hill.
That street's Fern Hill, but Duncliffe is on.
Okay.
So, this is Morgan Mill. O'Mill's first, Morgan's the next one.
O'Mill is not on the list to be repaid.
Is Morgan Mill?
Morgan Mill is not on the list to be repaid.
Okay, all right.
Sounds like that'd be real candidates for next year's payback, David.
Yes, okay. And if you will have, check into the drainage that's on, I'm pretty sure it's Morgan Mill. Check into the drainage for that and see what's going on with that and if it belongs to the city to clean it out or how that works for him. And then the, I have a question for somebody that I told him I didn't completely understand, but we did talk about in council. You, the mayor, brought up on, it's a Drake property that the school has proposed to put the new school on. Is that correct?
I know it's on East Main Street.
It's Drake, it's Drake.
And it's on East Main Street, extended beside the Rock Quarry.
Yes, yes. It gets a little confusing because the Drake's own property's on both sides of the bypass.
So, it's the one that's actually behind the Kmart development and the Rock Quarry is right here. Southern State Rock Quarry, that piece of property.
It's across the railroad.
If I'm grabbing out East Main Street, extended, it'd be on the left.
It's on the left, before you go, before.
Before you hit the bypass.
Okay, that's my, that's my...
After the railroad.
That's what I told him, they told me, yeah, okay. And then one more thing, this is just a comment in general.
You don't think that's right?
Well, they're both, the both properties...
It's outside the bypass.
No.
Yeah, it is.
So, we, okay, so it's the one that's...
No!
Is it the...
The back of the field is Karen?
From Richfield?
So, it's the one that's actually behind Blacktop Bell on that side.
Geographically, it's right there, but it's far down East Main, extended.
Okay, you're going on down, you're going into what's Richfield Mansions all, that takes you into that section.
You're going toward the quarry.
Okay, you're going to the actual quarry, not the O.R.R. quarry.
You're going toward the quarry, it's on the left.
It's on the left.
Where that old big house is. Big white house sits right there.
I well-picked at that.
Yeah, big white house sits on that property.
Years and years and years.
I was thinking this side.
That's a property, that's, see, I was totally confused. That's where we need that little technology screen up here, which one it is. But it's the one, is it, it's closer to town, away from town? Okay, do that.
You talk, I'll show you.
Don't worry, I can talk, okay.
No problem, man. No problem, Andrew.
Polly said she's heard enough.
All right. The other situation is in town is we need to look at planning and zoning because, and David might agree with me on this one, the requirements that we have, nobody from this business has come to talk to me about it, it's just my own observation as they're building. But it's that Clark pumping go that's on the corner of Pierce Pike in the bypass. They have put up all of these trees today around it and nobody, under God's green earth, builds a million-dollar building and then puts trees in front of it to cover it up. So, I know that P&amp;Z has probably told them to do this because of the requirement due to the blacktop space that they have. Well, the problem's gonna be, it is gonna be a hard space to come and go as these trees that they're putting out...
It'll be a whole lot harder.
It's gonna make it a whole lot harder and they're covering up their business to that part of it, but it's, it doesn't make sense that they're gonna do this. There's a pine tree coming up right here in this corner that they're putting up and when you turn in and out...
There's no turning left there anyway, Karen. It's gonna be impossible to take a left-hand turn right there going through the...
Well, now they're putting the trees up and I'm sure they're required to do that, so that's another problem. So, we need to review that, I asked the council, the mayor. We need to review the policy that goes along with, 'cause I am sure that's what it is. But nobody from that, nobody from that business has contacted me about anything, nobody. It's just my own observations of what they're doing.
Well, why don't we, why don't we confirm your thoughts?
Okay, okay.
And then if indeed they're being forced to do something.
That's because every place else, if you look, and David does for the development, but you have X amount of blacktop space, you're gonna have X amount, and they're holding front now is blacktop because of the business that they are. So, I'm sure that's why they're having to put the trees up in front.
Although we, we, yeah, yeah, there are percentages of parking lots that have to be in green space, but I think those are...
That's for larger, 10%, I think is the ratio on that. But around the perimeter, it's a shrub every three feet and a tree every, I don't know, 30 or 50 feet.
So, it's not because of that?
But you're right, this is far denser than that. And I was kinda wondering the same thing, and why in the world they put so many trees up?
Well, when I first saw the side...
Some of them are pine trees.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Lord.
And one of the pine trees is right out front and we're already, everybody's concerned about the coming and going, yeah.
Actually, huge.
It's this property right here, kinda hidden. It's that, that property right there. There's, there's East Main extended going back into town, this is the bypass.
Okay, it's across the bypass?
It's across the bypass and it's right there, it's across from that big subdivision.
Okay, all right.
That's the one right in there.
Where that house sits.
Okay.
Is it Richmond?
That is where I thought it was.
Okay, well, that is not where I thought it was and so, thank you for clarification. It backs up against the interstate. Okay, well, that is not where I thought it was, and so thank you for clarification. It backs up against the interstate.
Well, I was kind of thinking, when they were talking about it, I was thinking on this side too, but that'd been tough going across the railroad tracks to the school.
Well, I was gonna say, there's no way too, what, any traffic's gonna get down that section. Okay, well, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. Okay, that's it.
Blacktop Washington Street, it looks great, but I noticed there was one manhole that I don't think they got the ring around. Anyway, it was kind of dark, but I was gonna call later, but I'll mention it.
But you don't feel it.
Didn't quite see it.
Did it ring?
If you don't.
Get my alignment taken here tomorrow.
If you don't raise, raise the manhole rings, it gets a little bumpy. That was on Washington, it hasn't spiked it yet either.
No. And then the meeting tomorrow night, mayor, did we talk about having all three of those different bullet points tomorrow night, or is that some, a new development? In regards to Lexus Way and the Business Park, because they're all huge topics, and I can see where each one of them would be, you know, could merit its own individual meeting if we wanted to do that.
Yeah, actually, we, no, that was a creation from City Hall. That Frankenstein happened upstairs. We knew that we wanted to get together with the court on the radio issue. We've just had so few opportunities to sit court and council.
Yeah, I know.
That we, we thought the Business Park discussion was far enough down the road and generally understood. That we thought we could show them some of the new engineering drawings, some of the schematics, and just move that conversation a little further. And actually, the third one, David, was, we just reached, and I spoke with a couple of county officials who thought that it would be a good time to plant the seed. What I wanted to do tomorrow night, if we can, is, I think it makes a very compelling picture when we show the the L-Bar slide that shows the status of built-out subdivisions around Georgetown, and how all the subdivisions that bring our community to the south and to the west are pretty much on that map. Red and dark orange, which means they're nearly completely built out. And we look on the map around Georgetown where there's yellow, where there's homes platted and ready for development. And about the only area of real growth that we have in terms of currently platted homes is on Old Oxford Pike. And there are more than fifteen hundred homes planted for Old Oxford Pike. It is substandard today, and to me, it's one of the the promises that Georgetown and Scott County have to keep if we're gonna maintain our status as a growing community to have the infrastructure to support it. If Old Oxford becomes so important, and the extension of Lexus Way to relieve some of that stress, I had some folks across the street say, why don't you go ahead and plant that seed with the court? And at least start the conversation.
Do you know the order of your agenda? Because it's gonna be difficult for me to be here tomorrow night. It's why I'm sharing. You won't be here. You won't either?
Tuesdays are not a good night, especially.
I will.
That's good.
That's good. Yeah, I know. And the reason I'm asking the order of it is, you know, if there's any way I can, you know, get over here. Yeah. So I suspect the radio part will be the first item on the.
The radio is the first, it's the most information, the TUSA, the two consultants from TUSA.
TUSA Consulting.
TUSA Consulting will be there, and that is the primary order of business. The other two, as time allows, we'd like to have some slides to just begin a conversation with the court. But clearly, our number one priority is, is to build the council and the court's understanding of the technical parts of the radio stuff. We had pointed out before that the judge and I have been in so many meetings with this. We have come to accept the need, and you all haven't had benefit of all those presentations.
Will you be recording the meeting?
It will, yes.
I will get with the fiscal court folks and make sure that they've got that.
Because we can watch it later than if you record it.
That'd be good. And if you could send a slideshow of whatever's gonna be presented in regards to. Whatever L-Bar presented. I didn't see that either, unfortunately. I've heard about it, though.
The slideshow, just for clarification, when, when I had Arlene, once we knew the date for the radio meeting, and we knew it was gonna be November fourteenth, it was our job to make you all aware of the date as quickly as we could. So Arlene sent out what was essentially a save-the-date kind of thing, letting you all know when the workshop meeting would be. Almost as an afterthought, I asked Arlene to include the original PowerPoint on the email that went out with the meeting. That was just, if you all had gotten that a couple of weeks ago, I think you had sent it out, and I said, Arlene, look, if that email's gotten buried somewhere in the email, just attach it again as a courtesy. We've asked the consultants to do some additional analysis that we've been asked to do, but frankly, the conversation about the tower sites has remained completely fluid until just the last couple of days. We, we had an opportunity to meet with the chief of the University of Kentucky Police Department and talk about their P twenty-five system in ways that we might be able to cooperate with them. They were hopeful that their big tower site that they use is on top of the Patterson Office Tower, nine hundred and forty-three feet or something. So it was their expectation that the use of that tower could cover, cover some of our need in Western Scott County and perhaps eliminate the need for one or more of the towers that were in the original presentation. So we felt obligated to explore those as much as we could to see just how much benefit we could get for that. We think we now have those answers, and they will include that in some of the presentation they do tomorrow night. But, yeah, we've worked until the eleventh hour trying to make sure that we evaluated the various options and what the cost of those options would be.
Mayor, I hate to run, but I have to ride, so my ride is here.
Your ride is here, and you may go, because this lasted thirty-six minutes more than I thought it would.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I called an hour.
I'm good, mayor.
You're good?
Moving on. Yes, sir.
Parma?
Chuck brought up what I was talking about, the light out there by Ann Mason and stuff, and turning and so forth, so I haven't seen anything else.
Good.
I have two things, actually. One, somebody had brought it up at one of the last meetings about the courthouse clock over here, and the bells and all that. And I saw Jared Holland at the chamber luncheon today and spoke with him, and he got right on it. He called the company on the phone for me and said that they're three weeks from getting the parts that will arrive, and they hope to have it done in two months. So we'll have the clock, oh, Ms. Millie over here. And I don't know if you all mentioned it, but we have the ribbon cutting on Thursday the sixteenth at building inspection. Is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Lemon clock.
Lemon clock. A kind of ribbon cutting and an open house.
Oh, good, okay.
Let everybody go through and see what the changes have been. Thank you for reminding everybody. Thank you.
One real quick thing. Went to church Sunday, and someone stopped me and asked me that lives on Dudley if there was anything that we could come up with, a little bit of signage or something, maybe that doesn't say what five K run or what run, but that there'll be a run, because she gets trapped. She gets trapped and can't, like, you know, her deal was, she got up early one morning, went to the grocery store, had to, couldn't get back home, and then finally got, went bypass, ended up on Fountain and walked three blocks back to her house with her groceries. So I said I would ask you all if there was some way, signage, no?
If she's on, if she's on Dudley, regardless of the route, she can get out.
She told me she couldn't get, so anyway, I'll, okay.
We need, we need to sit with her and help her understand.
Okay, okay.
From what you're describing, she should be.
Okay, all right. I just was told this, and I. Well, we'll talk to her. We'll get that settled, that's all.
Anything else? If there's nothing else coming for the council?
Way to go, Dave. Take off running.